All right, I am going to read our prepared statement. Good evening, we greatly appreciate our staff, council and residents adapting to our teleconference format due to the COVID-19 pandemic. Tonight's meeting will be held under Minnesota State Statute 13D dot zero two one that permits a public body to hold a meeting via telephone or other electronic means due to the COVID-19 pandemic. For members of the public, the meeting is being livestreamed on the City of Wyoming YouTube page. The Wyoming City Council meeting will be recorded as part of the public record. After each agenda item is read and staff gives a report on the agenda item, I will call upon each council member individually if they have questions on that particular item. If you wish to make a motion or second emotion, please state your name first. All votes on all items will be completed by a roll call to meet the standard for the state statute thirteen D dot zero two one. Thank you. All right, with that, we will do open forum. It's an opportunity for members of the public to address the city council on items that are on or not on the current agenda. Items requiring council action may be deferred to to staff or boards and commissions for research and future council agendas if appropriate. You will be limited to three minutes and we ask that you conduct yourself in a professional courteous manner and refrain from the use of profanity. Failure to abide by this policy may result in the loss of your privilege to speak. Mr. Linwood, do we have someone for open forum tonight?
We, Mayor, we do. We do have an individual that's requested to be on open forum tonight. So with that, I'm, he is in the room and I'm going to unmute his mic and allow him to ask his questions. One second here. Mr. Kentros?
Yeah, good evening.
Can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Nick Kentros, seventy-five eighty-four, two hundred and forty-fourth Street.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Kentros, your question for council or your statement?
Um, I just was on the city website and I wanted to discuss the stormwater utility rates. It looks like we're budgeting for about four hundred and seventy-five thousand worth of equipment with a two hundred thousand dollar grant. I see an excavator for purchase showing at seventy-five thousand. I'm just assuming it's about an eighteen thousand pound excavator. So I just wondered, is the city going to need, in addition, a truck, a trailer, a forty-nine operator, somebody with a Class A license to move this equipment? When we could possibly be renting that? I also see that we budget thirty to forty thousand for work each year. I don't know if we have a list of identified work that would call for the excavator where it'd be more beneficial to maybe rent something for these smaller projects?
Actually call point of order. It's on the agenda and this is supposed to be for not on the agenda.
Well, it's for, it's for either council member, but we can certainly take that, that question and answer those when we go through that agenda item tonight.
Yeah.
Let's staff address those questions.
Yeah, so then I would just ask, you know, on that street sweeper, there are high maintenance item as well. You know, it's a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar piece of equipment. You're seeking a two hundred thousand dollar grant. I know we have local companies that own these. Is that something we could look at, you know, bidding a contract out for five years? When it's, you know, we are, we always have so many miles of roads, maybe we add some developments. But I don't see the benefit. A street sweeper is very high maintenance. You're going to have tier four engines. You have a lot of wear parts on those. You're going to need a certified mechanic. And then the same thing with the VAC trailer. Is it something where you use a contractor to perform that scope of work?
All right. Thank you for your question. I believe that was your three minutes, Mr. Kentros. So we will make sure that we do address those questions when we have that on our agenda. Thank you for joining us this evening. Mr. Linwood, are there any other people online for the open forum?
Mayor, no, there are not.
All right. All right, with that, we'll go ahead and move on our agenda. We'll move to approval of minutes. Number one is to consider approving the minutes of the regular meeting of the Wyoming Minnesota City Council for November fourth, twenty twenty. Do we have any comments or questions? If not, we need a motion to approve.
Members, all is moved to approve.
Members, Zeross makes the first motion. Do we have a second?
Member Luger will second.
Member Luger makes that second and we will do roll call, please. Member Luger?
Aye.
Member Schilling?
Aye.
Member Jaeger?
Aye.
Member Zeross?
Aye.
And Mayor Iverson is an aye. It does pass. Number two on the agenda. Consider approving the minutes of the special meeting of the Wyoming Minnesota City Council for November twelfth, twenty twenty. If there are no questions or comments, do we have a motion to approve?
Member Schilling, so moved.
Member Schilling makes the first motion. Do we have a second?
Member Luger will second.
Member Luger makes the second roll call, please. Member Luger?
Aye.
Member Schilling?
Aye.
Member Jaeger?
Aye.
Member Zeross?
I'm staying. I wasn't there.
Okay, and Mayor Iverson is an aye. So it does pass. I will go down to public hearings and that's for the agenda item number three. We will need a motion to go into the public hearing. So do we have a motion to go into the public hearing for Resolution twenty dash eleven, one oh two, adopting assessments for the twenty twenty street reconstruction projects?
Members, all is moved.
So we have Member Schilling as a first. Do we have Member Zeross as a second?
Sounds good.
Great, thank you. So roll call for the open meeting, please. Member Luger?
Aye.
Member Schilling?
Aye.
Member Jaeger?
Aye.
Member Zeross?
Aye.
And Mayor Iverson is an aye. Do we have anybody for the public hearing?
Mayor Iverson, we did not receive anyone for the public hearing tonight for the street assessments.
Okay, thank you. So now we will need a motion to close the public hearing. Do we have a motion to close the public hearing for Resolution twenty dash eleven dash one oh two?
So moved, Member Luger.
Member Luger makes the first motion. Do we have a second?
Member Schilling, second.
Looks like it's going to be you two all night is kind of how we're going to go. So makes that second. It's always nice when everybody jumps in though, when we have all five of us. All right, um, so roll call, please. Member Luger?
Aye.
Member Schilling?
Aye.
Uh, Member Jaeger?
Aye.
And Member Zeross?
Aye.
And Mayor Iverson is an aye. So we are out of the public, uh, meeting, the public hearing. So number three, to consider Resolution twenty dash eleven dash one oh two, a resolution adopting assessments for the twenty twenty street recon- reconstruction project, city project number twenty dash oh one. Mr. Erickson, are you gonna do this for us?
Yes. Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. I have prepared just a brief PowerPoint, just highlighting again the project, the costs, the assessments, the process. And with, uh, without those individuals here present for it, I'll try to make, uh, make my way through this relatively quickly. But again, uh, we had the assessment hearing here this evening, the twenty twenty street improvement project. Again, I just typically highlight the public improvement process. We certainly meet all the requirements, but I know that the council appreciates the efforts to go above and beyond and participate in additional neighborhood meetings and things of that nature. And it really helps these projects go along quite well with additional information for property owners to allow them to engage in the process and share with us their concerns related to the, the project area and their knowledge of the area and what needs to really be included in these improvement projects. So we found really a successful path to, to really successful projects here. And so we're pleased with the outcome of this project as well. It's not quite complete. But again, we are, I would say ninety-nine percent complete. We have some minor punchless items. And then, of course, we're waiting for some restoration to occur next spring. So we won't close the contract out until next spring. And then we'll go into a two-year warranty period following that. But I'll go through the assessment project again, just highlight the project location, existing conditions, the improvements, the project costs and funding sources, what the results of that was with regards to assessments and financing, where we're at in the product schedule. Typically, we open for public comment. We, we obviously don't have public here for that this evening. So like I said, I'll try to get my way through this relatively quickly. There is a state statutes, chapter four twenty-nine that really highlights the public improvement process. And again, we, we go above and beyond. There's really two mandatory meetings for the public and that's this meeting as well as the, uh, public hearing where we order the improvements. And so again, there's kind of a flow chart that we've developed where it's holding.
I'm sorry, you're not sharing your PowerPoint, just so you know.
Oh, boy. Thank you for having me, Rob.
No, you're welcome.
Would be helpful. All right, so back, uh, I just stepped back a slide here. I just talked a little bit about the agenda and I went through that pretty quickly, but it's certainly easier if you can read along. So my apologies for not having, uh, double clicked on screen share. I thought I had done that, but just, uh, just did the one click, I guess. This is really highlighting that public improvement process again. And so the city decision here this evening is hold that assessment hearing and adopt the assessment rule. Once thirty, the, once thirty days occurs, uh, a period in which property owners have the ability to pay that off in full without interest charges, that will be certified to the county auditor by city staff. Again, the assessment process follows Minnesota Statute chapter four twenty-nine. This evening, written objection of appeal would be, must be presented in writing and signed by the property owner prior to or at the hearing. The notice of appeal must be filed within thirty days after adoption of the assessment. And just a quick highlight here, the interest rate identified is four percent. Again, I think we're all very familiar with the project location. We've talked about it at council meetings for the last oh, boy, four or five months, I suppose. Quite, quite the project. We certainly had a lot of residents involved in this project. It was more invasive than our typical projects. It is a, an urban section with, meaning we have concrete curb and gutter and storm sewer. And so certainly that's more challenging to construct these with existing neighborhoods trying to get in and out of their driveways. And we have concrete driveway replacement and curb and gutter storm sewer. So it's certainly more challenging. And so we appreciate everybody's patience on the project. We were very pleased with the outcome and we've heard a lot of positive feedback from the property owners as well. Again, just a couple of photos of what we had out there existing. You can see maintenance work around structures, uh, grass growing in the, in the roadway, roadway, uh, breaking apart in, in quite a few different areas really throughout the entire project area. And so it definitely was in need of, of repairs and, um, and we did that. There's also drainage issues throughout where there's just standing water. There's really lack of grade on the roadway to convey water, lack of storm sewer facilities to, to pick up and drain the streets since there's really standing water throughout the area. So the improvements consisted of bituminous pavement surface with concrete curb and gutter, roadways match the existing. Or we minimized a couple of them to reduce down to twenty-eight feet, which is our standard. There were a number of drainage improvements throughout. We've expanded the storm sewer system, changed modify, changed and modified grades, improved ditches, in clearing of overgrowth and removal of sedimentation in the ditch along the west side of the project area. The council also looked at improvements to Lyons Park. You can see the existing parking lot was a gravel surface parking lot. And we moved forward with an alternate as part of the bid to pave and strike that parking lot. And that has also been completed. Just highlighting again our road section. We have a road section that is significant, one that will last for many, many years to come. But it is something that is standard with all of our developments and our new roadway improvement projects. Just took, highlight some of the photos and I apologize, I didn't get out there before the snow hit on all of these. This is a progress photo here. But again, you can see the concrete curb and gutter on the edges of the roadway, concrete aprons at all the existing driveways and new bituminous surfacing. Of course, underneath the roadway, we have brand new storm sewer as well. Again, I apologize, I didn't get to the photos before the snow hit, but you can see a lot of areas are starting to green up. Again, this is one of our roadways along two hundred and sixty-third Street. And of course, the improvements to the parking lot. Again, you can see it's a little wet yet, but the parking lot improvements are now looking at the, at the shelter here. We have striping twenty-four foot drive aisle and simply just pave the existing gravel surface. Modified the grade slightly for drainage there. So the project cost, the total project cost was three point five one one million. Pretty significant undertaking for the city, but one that was vastly or long overdue. I just wanted to quick highlight the surface improvements and drainage improvements are those that are accessible. Those that were not accessible were the water main improvements and the park improvements. Part of the drainage improvements, we also did not assess for the ditch cleaning. I think we've had some commentary from property owners during the public hearing process that they felt that was something that was more likely, uh, or shouldn't be taken from regular maintenance dollars and, and reference to the stormwater utility. And so that's an additional cost that was not assessed. We, we taken that, that portion out. It was, it was not significant. It was about fifty-five hundred dollars, I believe. Again, our assessment policy is we assess for twenty percent of the surface and drainage improvements. The assessment calculation is based on a unit rather than front footage. And we always look to see if there's number of, or lots that can be subdivided into additional buildable lots. And there were not any in this case. And so all of the parcels are assessed uniformly throughout the, throughout the project area. Again, just highlighting the project area, the parcels that were, that were looked at to evaluate whether they were accessible or not. We had a hundred and thirteen accessible units with the assessment total totaling six hundred and eighty-eight thousand, fifty-five dollars and ninety-nine cents, resulting in assessment per unit of six thousand, eighty-eight dollars and ninety-nine cents. We typically just provide a, an example of a amortization table of what those payments look like for the duration of the assessment payback, again, from starting in twenty twenty-one, ending in twenty thirty-five. And product side of schedule, again, you can see the, the process that was involved from October of twenty nineteen all the way through today. Has a lot of work been completed during that timeframe? Again, we're very pleased with the result of the project. It looks fantastic. Really transformational for that neighborhood. It's really, really quite the improvement. So we're very pleased with the outcome and the contractor did a very nice job. So with that, I'll stand for any questions that you might have.
Sorry, let's try that again. I was unmuted. So, uh, let's start with, um, Member Jaeger for any questions?
Oh, no question. And it does look very nice.
All right, and Member Schilling?
Uh, no questions. Um, looks fantastic. I took a drive over there the other day, so.
Great. Member Zeross?
No questions. It does look great over there.
And Member Luger?
No questions.
All right. I don't have any questions either. I just wanted to point out a couple of things. One, it was under budget than what we thought it was going to be back in a year ago. So I think that, um, is some savings because what did we, it was originally going to be, let's see, off the top of my head, I want to say sixty-three or sixty-four?
Yes, it was ready to me. There is roughly sixty-three fifty. So yes, we were under budget from what was originally anticipated in completing the feasibility study.
That's awesome. And then I just like the, the fact that we listened to the residents and you know, clearing out kind of that general maintenance stuff that we did that. That's a great job on council. And that the water mains aren't, um, assessed. And the fact that we have a park that is no longer dirt, that it's actually paved. And that's a, um, that Lyons Park is usually pretty busy. So very happy that we were able to do that as well. So, um, and I just would like to thank you, Mr. Erickson, um, and the crew, um, that did all the upgrades and the hard work. It was a long, uh, complicated project. So I thank you for that. And also to Mr. Linwood because he did field several calls in the last week as well. So to answer any questions on that. So good job to everybody. All right. So with that, we need a motion to approve Resolution twenty dash eleven dash one oh two, a resolution adopting assessments for the twenty twenty street reconstruction project, city project number twenty dash oh one. Do we have a motion to approve?
Members, all is so moved.
Members, Zeross makes the first. Do we have a second?
Member Luger will second.
Member Luger makes the second roll call, please. Members, Zeross?
Aye.
Member Jaeger?
Aye.
Member Schilling?
Aye.
Member Luger?
Aye.
And Mayor Iverson is an aye. That does pass. Thank you. We'll move on to the consent agenda, number four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, and twelve. Does anybody wish to pull an item, um, four through thirteen for further discussion?
Councilmember Jaeger would like to pull twelve and thirteen.
Right, twelve and thirteen. Are there any other items that need to be pulled? If not, will someone please make a motion to approve, uh, four through eleven on the consent agenda?
So moved, Member Luger.
Member Luger makes the first and I'll make the second for ease. Roll call, Member Luger?
Aye.
Member Schilling?
Aye.
Member Jaeger?
Aye.
Member Zeross?
Aye.
And Mayor Iverson is an aye. So we are going to pull twelve and thirteen, number twelve, to consider a release of certificate of completion between the City of Wyoming and the Party to the Development of Renaissance Land Company, Inc. Councilmember Jaeger, your question?
I just like more background on this. Uh, did we mortgage something? I, I take it Regal Investments is Regal Machine?
Correct, uh, Councilmember Jaeger, I, this, this item was, as the council knows, added to the agenda here. There was a request from Regal as they're working through some, some matters with a financial institution. If there was, we could get this through. Essentially, back in two thousand and one, there was an agreement between the City of Wyoming, Regal Machine and Renaissance Land. And that was for the development of the business park area where Regal Machine is located. That included a development agreement and then a mortgage from the city along with a TIF. That mortgage amount was a hundred and twenty thousand and that was, uh, and actually worked through a loan through MBAF, Minnesota Business and Finance. Essentially, this was a development agreement and it was a mortgage in place. This was verified that everything was completed through the development agreement with Renaissance Land and is presented to the council, uh, the release of assignment of rents and the release of the mortgage that has been satisfied. We were able to verify that, uh, back in two thousand and six. That was verified that all those funds had been authorized by the city council to be repaid to the city and then to MBAF. So this is more of a, a housekeeping item. Um, when they went to do a title search on the property, it found out that there was several items on the title search that were open or outstanding. Normally, these items wouldn't have been signed off on and approved by the council in a more timely manner. At this point in time tonight, we're just going through that to make sure that we're fulfilling those components of the agreement. Everything has been fulfilled. We have worked with our legal counsel and our, our city attorney on this to ensure that that these have been completed appropriately and they have drafted these documents tonight along working with that financial institution. So if there's any other questions, happy to answer those.
Oh, okay. What, uh, what did the city do to develop that area that required a mortgage?
The mortgage wasn't necessarily for the area. The area of the mortgage was, the mortgage was an amount for a hundred and twenty thousand. To our understanding, it was either for components of the building or equipment of the building because it was through the city and then through Minnesota Business and Finance. So it was an agreement as part of, there was a TIF over there too, and it was a component of the agreements over there that was, at the time, I, I don't know exactly the minutia of why they wanted to do that for that, uh, particular amount, but that was the amount that was asked upon and what the city agreed to back in two thousand and one.
Okay.
From the, from the best, from, from, from the best that we can tell, there was a, a loan that the city received and, and sort of acted as a conduit to Regal, um, for certain economic development measurements that, that would have been forgiven had they met those. And it seems that those, those weren't met. So the city, uh, repaid the loan, but the loan was a hundred and twenty thousand. And so the city maintained a security interest in the mortgage, uh, to, uh, ensure the repayment. Uh, they held it as collateral. Uh, and as Administrator Linwood noted, we've, we've confirmed that that has all been repaid just for whatever reason, a satisfaction was never recorded. So, so we're just cleaning that up right now.
Okay, cool. Thanks. Um, I would move to approve items eleven, uh, twelve and thirteen.
All right, Member Jaeger, uh, move to approve number twelve and number thirteen. Do we have a second?
Members, zero a second.
We got Member Zeross with the second. Roll call, please. Member Luger?
Aye.
Member Schilling?
Aye.
Member Jaeger?
Aye.
Member Zeross?
Aye.
And Mayor Iverson is an aye. Uh, did I note that correctly that it was Member Jaeger who did the first motion?
Yes.
I did. Okay, sounds good. Thank you. All right, um, we'll move on to our agenda items fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen and eighteen. Report of officers, boards, commissions and department heads. Do we have any, uh, member who would like to pull anything from those reports? Not seeing that every, anybody would like to. We'll move on to communications, which is number nineteen, the Wyoming tree lighting ceremony update. And I believe Ms. Dumas will give us an update on that.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Mayor, Mayor, Council, community events are a really critical component of, uh, the city's offerings to give residents an opportunity to really express their community spirit. And the COVID-19 pandemic has really presented some challenges for us to be able to continue offering those, um, events and those traditions in Wyoming. However, we've been pretty successful with the events that we put on earlier this year with the Stagecoach Days and the Don't Have to Talk event, um, and the fireworks. Uh, and we got some great feedback and learned a lot through that process. So looking forward towards the tree lighting ceremony, we've really been reflecting on how can we make sure that we're able to provide an opportunity for residents to participate and, um, express that community spirit as a part of this tradition while also making sure that we're being safe, um, especially with the increasing rates of COVID-19 around Minnesota. So there's a couple of proposals of the city, city staff are offering. The first is that instead of holding a traditional gathering at the site of the tree lighting, uh, Road Park, that the city, uh, distribute a, a video that, uh, has interviews with community members who participated in the event in the past to kind of share, um, digitally some of their, uh, well wishes to the community. And, um, it also provides an opportunity where we can maybe highlight some local businesses who might be hurting at this time and encourage people to support those local businesses. Some other ideas that we have, uh, is that we could livestream the actual tree lighting, um, that would, livestream it on our social media site. So staff would light up the tree, not have a gathering at the site, but that, that light up process could still be shared with the community through our social media networks. Another idea we have, uh, is that we could host some, uh, competitions or, um, contests online to have people submit, uh, different items for participation. A couple of ideas have been, a festive mask competition for face masks. Another has been a, uh, snowman making contest and invite people to share some, um, of their activities and the ways in which they're really trying to make the best of this, uh, difficult time. And then finally, if there is an idea that council has that would, uh, kind of represent some type of finale, during Stagecoach Days, we did the fireworks. And if there's some other idea that council is interested in staff pursuing that would fill the kind of that space, we're also open to that conversation. So with that, I open up for questions.
Great. I, um, I'll start. I think that our residents, including me, would be extremely sad if, um, we did not do some type of tree lighting, some type of event. So, um, I like the mask contest as well. Maybe pictures can be submitted. Um, and then, um, people can vote on it, which I think would be great to have everybody kind of chime in on all our different social medias. Do we know what fireworks would cost? Obviously, we can't do it in that park based on Lake's gas. But, um, have we checked to see if maybe one, what the cost would be? It might be too cost prohibitive. And then, um, the other thing is I would like to reach out to see if we could find any ice sculptures. Maybe somebody who can come out or a few people could come out and do some, um, ice sculptures. Um, and people can go to the park later and look at it. So, Mr. Linwood, do you have any idea or Ms. Dumas about fireworks?
I have done some, um, inquiry with the, the city's normal firework, um, representative. And I'm waiting for them to get back to us on that in regards, obviously. and I'm waiting for them to get back to us on that in regards, obviously, um, we don't have a real large budget i, line item for this. So, um, we're kind of seeing what they may have available and we'd have to, uh, work to see what we could do and then, um, how we could stage that and if they can fit us in for schedule. So, um, I'm told that I should hear something back this week. So kind of trying to do our due diligence with that and see, um, like I said, how we could go about that as far as, uh, funding it too, but we are looking into possibilities there.
Okay, and, um, I know the governor tomorrow is about to make some more changes tomorrow. Um, would having dancers out there, if we're going to videotape, would having some type of dance group out there, um, would we have to keep that to 10 as well if it's outside, if it's a dance trou?
I, uh, I believe it would depend on the specifics of that event. Um, there's also opportunities if we were to do a video that we could invite, um, like a dance group to participate in that and, um, do so safely and make sure that we can highlight those dancers as well as, um, make sure that they're allowed to socially distance from one another as well as from, um, audience members.
Perfect. Um, those are all my questions, so I'll move on to council members. Um, member Luger?
Um, I, I like the dancers idea. You know, Forest, like, the, the Forest Lake High School does have a dance team. And I wonder if we could get some of our high school students, um, to, to want to participate in that. Um, I do have, I like the ideas and I, I like the ideas of, of the community participation, um, in terms of like a mask contest, um, and those ideas. I'm wondering if there's a way that we could do some kind of contest, possibly like a festive mask, um, thing, and the winner maybe gets to light the tree or like help light the tree, like in a socially distant way, um, that doesn't involve like a crowd. Um, and then I'm wondering also too, if there's some way that we can integrate. I know, um, our PD has a food and resource drive. Is there some way that we could integrate that to kind of culminate for the tree lighting ceremony, like kind of an end result? Winner gets to whatever. Or like, do we want to go city hall versus PD?
That actually is how the food drive is structured, is city hall versus the police department right now.
Well, I thought that was a joke. Okay, awesome.
Um, yeah, so the-
We got to start sharing this stuff.
The food and resource drive does culminate on, uh, that fifth Saturday, the Saturday, the fifth. Um, and so that's all a part of the design is to try and, um, bring people together and share those resources from that point.
So I wonder if there's something, whoever wins that, I wonder if there's a way that that could get brought into, um, some kind of, something with the tree lighting.
Right, great ideas. Uh, let's go to member Jaeger.
Oh. Last I read, the governor was limiting outdoor, indoor and outdoor gatherings to 10 and no more than three households. So how do we get dancers or carolers or anybody to, i, i, you know, to even tape or video anything with those restrictions?
That would be a part of the, um, the, how we would navigate it. Uh, obviously, we would be working within the governor's guidance. Um, the, the, uh, governor's guidance is specifically for restaurants and social gatherings, um, as well as large events. Those are kind of the three current, um, areas of his executive orders giving directions. So, um, if we were to do something, we would still want to make sure that we were limiting the number of people who were gathering, um, with the discussions of things like dancers that may require us to highlight individual dancers instead of maybe doing a group. I think we would defer to the guidance of, um, leadership on those groups to see what's capable, what's possible, um, for the, them to participate in something like that. Um, but ultimately, safety is, uh, the top priority for how we navigate through this.
Okay, thank you.
All right, um, member Jaeger, do you have anything that you want to add that, that, um, Ms. Dumas could look into possibly that could fit into that?
I mean-
Do you have any suggestions?
I'm not a party planner. I haven't given a party in like years. Um,
Okay, all right. We'll, um, move on to member Schilling. What was that?
Nothing, nothing. Move on if you want.
Okay, member Schilling?
Um, well, I have a suggestion. Can we have Claire's band go up there and sing Christmas songs? No, um, honestly-
Putting that out there, so-
Yeah, well, uh, honestly, it's, it's really tough because, you know, this is, i, it has not been a fun year and it's, it's a tradi, uh, tradition that I've been a part of since I, you know, lived here since we started it and it's one of those things that, you know, when I, I look at it and think about it, how many people do we have there? They're spaced out. But then when you have the fire there, everybody's back to back to back. Um, you know, I, I think a virtual would be nice. Um, I think the mask contest would be a great thing for someone to light. Uh, I just, uh, you know, and if we could somehow cancel Christmas so I don't have to see my in-laws, that would be great.
All right.
That's all I have.
You can't do that in a public meeting.
Oh, that's okay.
Really?
Oh, okay. Let's move on to member Ziras then.
You know, unfortunately, with this pandemic out there, uh, people are running scared. I'm one of them. So, uh, virtual probably be the only way to do it. If you have any where you restrict how many people come to the park when the lights are lit, how are you going to control that? I don't know how anybody could control it because who's going to go and who's not going to go. So I, I really don't have any suggestions other than maybe virtual or maybe the fireworks may be all right too.
All right, thank you. I would, thank you. I would love to see if maybe we can get a cost on some fireworks and then if maybe we have a business that might be able to, to help sponsor that and, um, I would think among us five council members and our social media, we could give them some good press, um, with helping sponsor it. I know it's last minute, everybody's budget and all that kind of stuff, but, um, Ms. Dumas really appreciate the, the thoughts and the presentation and, um, if I know of anything, this, this, um, city administration is very creative and, um, I'm sure we're going to come up with something. So that'll be great. So, thank you very much on that presentation. Uh, let's see, we are going to move on to, uh, number 20 on our agenda, to consider resolution 20 dash 11 dash 108, a resolution approving a variance to allow an off-premise sign at the northwest corner of Fallbrook Avenue and East Viking Boulevard at PIN 21 dot 00015 dot 00. Mr. Weck, are you going to start us out on this one?
Yes, I will, Madam Mayor. Uh, Madam Mayor and council members, um, Mr. David Karski has applied for a variance to replace the sign, um, that was at the inter, at that northwest corner on city property. Um, the previously, previous sign, um, was removed as a part of the MinDOT project for Highway 61. Um, it's sat in an area where there's going to be a, a drain adjustment. Um, Mr. Karski, um, spoke to the city council last February, um, looking for relief. Um, he was informed they needed to apply for that variance, so he has applied for the variance. Uh, the planning commission has held a public hearing. Um, they are recommending approval of the variance with the two conditions. One, that the sign, um, doesn't exceed the size, um, allowed by the ordinance, 160 square feet and 20 feet in height. And then that the applicant enter into a lease agreement with the city, um, since it is city property. Um, so again, the, the planning commission is recommending approval based on those two conditions.
All right, um, we will go around, um, with questions. We'll start with, uh, member Jaeger.
You talk about a lease agreement for the sign. How much was the city planning on charging for the lease?
That I don't, that's up to the city council.
Yeah, I, I think that's a, a component of this tonight that staff was, uh, going to be asking the city council for some direction on in regards to, um, that lease. You know, the lease is there for multitude or, a multitude of reasons since it is off-premise sign for the indemnification for liability reasons. But, um, something that we did want to ask the city council if they had any thoughts in regards to that.
Uh, Mr. Lunin, do we, are we required to charge at least a token $1 lease?
We, i, in order for it to be a valid lease, we need some form of consideration and, yeah, typically that would just be some type of monetary value, um, would be the easiest way to do that. So, so, yes, it would be recommended that we at least have some minimal rental amount. Um, as Mr. Linwood said, just to make sure we have a valid contract in place that preserves the city's rights.
And how long will the lease agreement be for?
The lease agreement, uh, cur, it is prepared as a year-to-year lease with automatic renewals. Uh, but it also provides the city the right to terminate upon 30 days' notice, um, for any reason the city may deem necessary. And that again is just, you know, based on what we ran into with, with the other location sign and, and we just need to make sure that, that the city has all of its rights preserved and can control that sign and the location of it and, and move it if necessary. We don't contemplate that would be necessary, but that, that right would be reserved to the city. Otherwise, it will just continue to renew year after year until the city terminates or, uh, the car wash informs the city it no longer wishes the place is fine there.
Okay, well, if we need to set a, um, dollar amount, I would lease it for $1.
Okay, uh, member Schilling, your thoughts on that, please?
Um, as much as I, uh, like the dollar just out of the state of that, but I look at it from a perspective as we have to administer this annually. We have to send out a bill out annually. Um, I, I'm thinking more along the lines for this premises of 100 bucks a year just to cover staff cost uh, for that. So I'll just kind of throw that out there. That's my thought on it.
Okay, thank you. Um, member Luger?
Does $100 allow us to just break even on it so that everybody gets what they need? Just in terms of like staff time and cost?
I would certainly think, oh, go ahead, Senator Linwood.
Uh, you know, as, as a lease, the way that we have it set up presently is it's, it's an annual lease, renewing year to year. So any rent, we, we would recommend and position as an annual rent. But that annual rent would, would technically under the terms of lease have to be paid year to year. We could expand the term or, or something to that regard if, if the council wished, but, but the year to year is, is kind of the simplest and, and the, the more common way that you would see something like this. And so that's how we have it set up. But yeah, it would be, you know, the $100 this year, if that's what the rent is, then that would be 100 next year. We certainly could put something in there that says upon renewal, the rent changes and, and that, that could be done as well. If, as Councilmember, member Schilling said, we want to capture more upfront here for costs associated with it because it really is something that going forward, there, there won't be a lot of, uh, staff, staff time needed to be dedicated to it. Um, as the lease will remain in place, the sign will remain in place and, and there shouldn't be much, much controversy to it that we anticipate.
Um, what is our, um, liquor license fee? Is that $100?
Well, it, it depends. An, an off-sale license, um, Ms. Dumas, I think you just sent those out. Do you, do you remember what an off-sale is? That's out of my head, 150?
Yes, uh, off-sale liquor license is $100, um, $100, yep.
Okay, and if I remember correctly as well, this one I never quite understood is, um, the bowling alley gets charged per lane. They get charged a fee per lane. So, um, and then per game that they have in there and so on and so forth. So, um, we, Mr. Linwood, do we, seeing that that's on city property, do we also need to mow the grass or take care of that lawn? So are we going to need to send over our, um, landscapers over there?
We, we did talk about that as staff as far as some of those costs and, um, and speaking with Mr. Almgeild, uh, it sounds as if right now, um, we don't have any kind of a, any of our crews or anyone else mowing that area. Mr. Almgeild, do you want to speak to that?
Yes, uh, currently, we do ditch mow it once a year, um, with a tractor when we go through. Otherwise, uh, we do not do an, you know, annual mowing, uh, like weekly mowing. Um, it, and if we did, it would have to be contracted out through our mowing contract.
My concern with that, um, is now that we're going to have a sign there and we have some buildings there, you know, is that something that we're going to need to add to our, um, groundkeeping? Because, um, we actually might, I mean, there's some good potential for businesses back there as well. I kind of hate to see the weeds all grow up in it, but that's probably for another discussion, um, at that point in time. Um, uh, so anyways, I appreciate that. Um, I guess I'm, the only thing I'm struggling with is I'm, I'm so happy that we were able to come up with an agreement or with a resolution to the sign, um, because we did meet with the owner and, um, it was very unfortunate that, um, it was kind of a, I think in the past, kind of a handshake kind of thing and, and, um, nothing got recorded. And unfortunately, um, that conversation that we had is we had to make sure that, um, something got recorded this time so he doesn't have to go through it again. So, um, I guess knowing that, um, we're going to need to have to do some type of maintenance on it, some type of, on the, on the road or on the grass and then administrative staff time. I think I, I'm comfortable with $50, um, with that. Um, and I'm, I'm open to discussion with that. I know, member Ziras, you haven't spoken yet. So, um, if you have some comments on that, that would be great.
Sure. Well, I'd be interested in the $50 and the reason I'm saying that is, uh, originally when that first sign was put up there, was put there because there used to be a road on the east side of the, uh, car wash in that new bank over there. That was taken away when they worked on East Viking Boulevard. So it left a hardship for the owner of the car wash and he came to council telling us about, it caused slow business, so he asked to have that sign put on the city property where, where it was and now the new sign is going to be. So, um, due to that fact, I would be, I would have been all right with the dollar actually, but I'd go along with the $50 also.
Okay, I'm just, my only thing is this, I, a dollar I think would be great too. The only thing that I worry about is setting precedence. And, um, you know, it does, we do have time, uh, staff time that goes into it. That's, um, just to, to cover that. So, um, so I'm gonna, has anybody changed their mind in terms of the fee? So we have a dollar, we have $100 and we have $50. So, um, I'm going to start with Claire. Claire, do you have a change of what you want to do or keep it at 100?
I think if, if 50, you know, uh, covers city costs and, um, and everybody gets what they need, um, at a reasonable rate, I'm fine with 50.
Okay, so we've got two 50s. Okay, um, member Schilling?
Um, I can agree with 50. I just want to make sure we're covering our administrative costs. That's my big thing. These are both unique situations, especially this one. Um, you know, and approval of the variance, I don't believe we set any type of precedence in any way, shape or form. This is a very unique circumstance. So my big thing is, is with just covering our costs, so I could be fine with the 50 annual.
Okay, Mr. Linwood, are we covering costs with 50?
I would think so in regards to the time to, to send that out annually, to send the invoice out and for staff to process it. I think that would be adequate, yes.
Okay, thank you. Um, member Jaeger?
Uh, how much has the gentleman already paid in fees to get that, to get the variance?
The, uh, $220 for the application fee and I think the escrow is 758 and so approximately 1,000 total. Um, the, how much of the escrow he'll get back will be determined after we get the final invoice from WSB's planner.
Okay, I mean, the one reason I, I, I suggested $1 is that he's already paid a chunk of change in fees. You know, if he's already put up $1,000 just to have the sign, but, you know, if you want 50.
Okay, I know other businesses kind of have to pay that same thing. So again, we have to figure out what's, um, fair. Uh, member Ziras, can you go to that?
I'll go. $50, friend.
Okay. All right, um, so it looks like 50 is majority. So, um, we need a motion to approve. Do we need to, we need to put that lease amount in there, correct, Mr. Lunin?
Correct, yeah. We would, we just want to approve with an annual rent of $50.
Okay, so we need a motion to approve resolution 20 dash 11 dash 108, a resolution approving a variance to allow an off-premise sign at Northwest Corner of Fallbrook Avenue and East Viking Boulevard at PIN 21 dot 0015 dot 00. Um, with a provision that it is a $50 lease annually, which the city will send out at the same time we do our liquor license. Does that sound fair? Okay, all right. Do we have a motion to approve?
So move, number Ziras.
Number, Ziras makes the first. Do we have a second?
Member Luger will second.
Member Luger makes the second. Roll call, please. Um, member Jaeger?
Hi.
Aye.
Member Schilling?
Aye.
Member Luger?
Aye.
Number Zeros?
Aye.
And Mayor Iverson is an aye. It is approved. Number twenty-one on our agenda to consider Resolution twenty dash eleven dash one oh nine. A resolution establishing stormwater rates for twenty twenty-one through twenty twenty-five based on the rate study completed by Baker Tilly Inc. And I believe we have um Baker Tilly here to do a uh presentation, Mr. Linwood. Is that correct?
That is correct. Mr. Dragasich has joined us to give the council. Uh, I know council saw this presentation um at our work session last Thursday, but he has uh, he's going to give a uh, a a brief presentation to go through it uh for the council and for the benefit of the public. So, uh, Mr. Dragasich, are you with us?
I am.
Okay. I believe you should be able to share your screen.
I will do that right now. Let's see. Can you all see that?
Yes.
Okay, so let's see. This is always a little bit more cumbersome to do on the screen than it is otherwise. But Baker Tilly was hired to do a stormwater utility rate study for the city to look at what rates would be needed to pay the operating capital costs of the fund um over the period from twenty twenty-one through twenty thirty. Uh, we start off by looking at the past performance of the stormwater fund, uh, the surface water fund, excuse me. And so this chart shows the revenues in green historically from two thousand seventeen through budget twenty twenty uh and the expenditures in red. So you can see the fund has incurred more expenditures, is taking in revenues um over the past four years. These show the ending cash balances uh in the fund for each of the past four years. It's increased slightly. The increases due primarily to the non-cash expense of depreciation, uh, which we will talk about a little later. I would point out that the fund has not incurred any expenses for capital in the last four years. So any capital improvements that were needed in the surface water system were paid for by other funds in the city. These are the actual numbers that supported those charts and graphs. Uh, I point out, you can see the operating income is actually was an operating loss every year for the past three actuals and budgeted in twenty twenty. So on an operating basis, uh, the revenues did not cover the expenses. So your current fees are shown um in the table here. For those who uh are are having none of them, uh, the current rest, single-family residential, agricultural and two-family residential uh, these are two dollars a unit. This is per quarter. Um, and the basically most of the other charges are sixteen dollars and twenty cents an acre per quarter with the exception of um urban industrial, which is twenty-one dollars per acre per quarter. So those are the current stormwater charges. We have a little discussion about cash reserves, um, because being good cash managers, you want to make sure you have enough cash on hand to pay debts when they come to, um, funds don't always flow and nice equal increments like your bills come in. And so they tend to have uh ups and downs and as do your expenditures. So there are a number of factors that we consider when we look at how much cash reserve a utility fund should have. They're listed here. I won't go through them in detail, but they are in the report. We're recommending that the city maintain a cash reserve at the end of each year equal to three months of operating expenses and next year's debt service, should you ever incur debt in the fund. That is consistent with the city's current policy for your water and sewer utilities. So that would put all these in the same um, on the same policy basis. The other thing that's often um confusing for folks is depreciation. If you look on the income statement, depreciation is an expense on the income statement for a utility fund like the surface water. So what is depreciation? Uh, it's kind of confusing for folks because depreciation isn't actually a cash expense, but what happens is when a utility buys an asset. Um, we talked a little earlier, our gentleman talked earlier about the uh street sweeper or the uh factor trailer. So when you buy that capital asset for the utility fund, that expense won't show up anywhere on the income statement. That money is taken from available cash. The way capital assets are handled in a utility fund is a portion of the cost of that asset is charged off each year as an expense. So if you bought a hundred-dollar item and you said a ten-year life, you would charge a ten-dollar expense each year to the fund as a way of costing, expressing the cost of that asset. And you do that because the asset has a longer life than one year. So the income statement reflects the expenses incurred in any single year. If you expense a capital asset all in one year, it would distort those expenses. So they are, the asset is capitalized and depreciated on the income statement. By the way, as I'm going through, council, mayor, if you have any questions, please just stop and ask while we're on the page so we're not fumbling back and forth, if you don't mind. There were a number of assumptions that went to projecting any type of financial uh forward projection. Um, and these are listed here, uh, financial reports that were provided, budgets. The fact that there were some grants they're going to receive. There was a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar transfer that's going to go into the surface water fund from the capital revolving fund to pay for capital improvements in twenty twenty-one. Uh, we have the surface water charges, the capital improvement plan and the draft long-term plan for the city. So those are some of the foundational items we use in preparing our forward projection. We talked about the capital improvements. The city has a CIP for the surface water fund. It's shown here in this chart. Um, we talked a little bit about those earlier, the excavator, the um street sweeper, the vector trailer. Those are all items that are in the city's CIP. On them, each year there are an amount that's put aside for other improvements to the system. Pond, storm and sewers and culvert improvements, things that are needed on a on a annual basis to keep the system functioning properly. And replacing stuff that's worn out. So we did our financial projections and we always start off with a financial projection that says, what if we just leave rates where they are? Because it tells us what happens to the fund if we don't make any changes in the rates. And when we put, we forward projected the revenues uh with no increase and the expenditures. What we found was, of course, the fund lost more money on an operating basis every year. So the operating losses uh kept kept rising. They're um projected to be a hundred and twenty thousand next year, and they keep rising each year thereafter. Um, because there's no more revenue coming in. Also, the ending cash balance gets more and more negative. As well as a negative cash bounce, it means there isn't sufficient cash in the fund to pay the expenses. So the city would have to transfer money out of the, some other fund to pay the expense that would be incurred in the surface water fund. Over the course of the period from twenty twenty-one through twenty thirty, you would have to move uh about a I gotta zoom this in if I actually read it, a million three hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars. That's come from somewhere within the city to pay those expenses within the surface water fund if rates were not increased at all. And that's a pretty key piece of information um for everyone to understand. Uh, that there is a need for these rate increases and this will happen if you don't increase them. So then we said, well, what rate increases would be needed to make the fund work, um, pay its operating expenses, provide an adequate level of cash reserves, pay for all the anticipated capital um that's in the, is in the CIP with the exception of the current transfer that's planned in twenty twenty. Um, and this could be twenty twenty-one of two hundred and fifty thousand from the capital reserve fund and a two hundred thousand dollar grant. And what we found was um that we would have to increase the quarterly charges of four doll- up to four dollars a quarter in twenty twenty-one or a dollar thirty-three a month. Um, to seven dollars and twenty cents a quarter or two dollars and forty cents a month in twenty twenty-two and to nine dollars and thirty-six cents a quarter or three dollars and twelve cents a month in twenty twenty-three. From there on, the increases are fairly small, about twenty cents um a quarter per year in order to maintain uh the level of cash you need to operate the fund in a financially responsible way. And I I want to talk about, why do you want to do that? Well, we were at the workshop uh last week. We talked about, you know, the fact that what you do in your enterprise funds is reflected in your bond rating by the credit rating agencies when you're in the market borrowing. And so if you're not managing your finances overall in a responsible way, the credit agencies will reduce your rating and will cost you more interest costs every time you go to borrow. So they look at the financial management of the city across all of your funds as a measure of your credit rating. And so here are the projections. So you see, we start off at at two dollars a quarter or sixty-seven cents a month um in twenty twenty. Going to four dollars a quarter in twenty-one, seven twenty a quarter in twenty-two, nine dollars and thirty-six cents a quarter in twenty twenty-three. And then nine dollars and fifty-five cents in twenty twenty-four. As if, as it flattens out. Uh, you'll notice that we have operating income actually when we get to to twenty twenty-three, um, and it stays positive through the remainder of of the projection through twenty thirty. We also see our cash going up and we I have ending cash in twenty thirty of five hundred and fifty-three thousand, five hundred and forty-three dollars. Now, having that cash balance um provides you with a cushion for unexpected uh things that may come up, expenses that you can't reasonably foresee or other capital improvements that may be needed. So when you do a project like improving the street, rather than paying for those stormwater improvements from some other fund, the capital revolving fund or other places, you could take them from the stormwater utility where they rightfully should come from. We then did a third financial projection saying, is there some way to ease the increases somewhat in the early years? Um, and we we said if we borrowed or transferred in another fifty thousand, another twenty-five thousand dollars um in twenty twenty-one and twenty-five thousand dollars in twenty twenty-two for a total additional transfer of fifty thousand dollars. We could reduce the early year increases and then we could repay those funds um to whatever fund provided the transfers with interest in twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four. So if we did that, the increases could be reduced to three dollars and sixty cents a quarter in twenty twenty-one, six dollars and forty-eight cents a quarter in twenty twenty-two and nine dollars and forty cents a quarter in twenty twenty-three. Beginning in twenty twenty-four and thereafter, the amounts are pretty much the same. All this does is ease the, ease the increases in the early years just ever so slightly. But it does achieve the same financial performance in that we received positive operating income in twenty twenty-three and remain that way throughout the projections. Our cash balance remains positive and increases. And we actually reach a cash balance of five hundred and twenty-eight thousand and eighty-one dollars at the end of the planning period in twenty thirty. So that's a lot of numbers to look at. Um, what does it all mean to your users, which is really uh the question. So here are the projected sam- sample bills with the rate increases shown um for each classification of utility customer that you currently have. And you'll see a two dollars, four dollars, seven twenty. These are per quarter, nine dollars and thirty-six cents, and nine fifty-five and nine seventy-four, which takes us through twenty twenty-five. For the uh commercial sixteen twenty, thirty-two dollars and forty cents, fifty-eight dollars and thirty-two cents, seventy-five dollars and eighty-two cents, seventy-seven dollars and thirty-three cents, and seventy-eight, eighty-eight per quarter out in twenty twenty-five. If we applied those transfers, you can see we would reduce those a bit. It only go up to three sixty in twenty twenty-one and six forty-eight in twenty twenty-two for the residential customers. And from that point forward, they pretty much match up with the other projections similarly for the non-residential land uses. The, the next thing we said, well, what does that make, what does that look like from a comparison with your neighboring communities? And so we did a comparison of the residential quarterly stormwater bills. The bars here in gray are the city of Wyoming and the bars in blue are the com- comparison communities. So you can see you're currently at two dollars, um, but on the residential bills, the city of Wyoming remains below all of the neighboring communities twenty twenty in cost. And I can assure you pretty much with certainty that these twenty twenty costs will go up somewhat uh in twenty, by twenty twenty-three or twenty excuse, by twenty twenty-three, which is last year we're showing here. So the average res- residential bill for the comparisons in twenty twenty is fifteen dollars and seventeen cents per quarter. In twenty twenty-three, with the rate increases we're recommending, you would be at nine dollars and thirty-six cents. So your bill in twenty twenty-three for a residential customer for surface water would be about six dollars a quarter cheaper than the average of the current bills of the comparison communities today. So your rates remain very uh efficient and less expensive than your neighboring communities, even after the increases that you need to adequately fund the utility. Maybe I'll stop there and see if anyone has a question on that.
Uncle, go ahead and unmute if you have a question. Uh, it doesn't look like it. Go ahead.
Okay, and so we then looked at the uh at the residential bills um with the transfers. It doesn't really change much. You still, you know, remain below everybody. The earlier years are just a little bit less of an increase than they were under the rate increase with no transfers. But in the end, you end up at nine dollars and forty cents per quarter in twenty twenty-three, still less than everybody else in twenty, who's, e- everyone else's twenty twenty bill. On the commercial um properties, you're sixteen dollars and twenty cents an acre per quarter now, uh, which is less than all of the surrounding communities that we compared you with. You would rise up to seventy-five dollars and eighty-two cents in twenty twenty-three, which would put you slightly above the average of the twenty, the twenty-two average of the comparison communities. So again, I would state that those comparison communities are probably going to have rate increases over the next four years. And, you know, you will bear, bear with them better than it's showing here, but you fare pretty well uh even with the increases we're projecting.
Question, Councilmember Jaeger. Um, with those increases, we are, we will be above, it appears to be above what um the other cities are. How does that make Wyoming business friendly or enable the city to attract and retain businesses?
Well, you, in twenty twenty-one, you are below everybody, you're you're, you're higher than, you're lower than everybody but Stacy. And that Stacy's twenty twenty amount. And so you really don't rise above most of them until twenty twenty-two. And that assumes none of the other communities raise their stormwater costs. And if they raise their stormwater costs, of course, then they would be higher than Wyoming likely. So the important part to interpret about the graph is the comparison of these are are all at twenty twenty rates. And we're starting off at twenty twenty out here on the far left, then going to twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three. But the other careers are frozen at their twenty twenty ratings comparison. So that is difficult to say in in twenty twenty-three where you will be relative to the others. But it's likely that they're going to increase their stormwater rates because their costs are going to increase as well.
But you don't know that if they're going to increase their rates.
We don't know that, no. No, we don't know that. Um, we know that it you will be less than, you know, less than Isanti's twenty twenty rate in twenty twenty-three. And it'd be just about even with Lindstrom's twenty twenty rate in twenty twenty-three. So yeah, you never know for sure, but my experience rates do tend to go up because costs tend to go up.
Okay, thank you.
So, um, and this just shows that same impact with the transfers. It doesn't change the relativity of the, of the comparison. So conclusions and recommendations, um, we said the surface waters project to experience increased operating capital costs over the planning period. So your costs are are projected to go up. Um, they're gonna rise fairly significantly in twenty twenty-one and not quite as fast thereafter. Um, based on our best estimates, um, your current rates are considerably less than those of your neighboring communities. You need to increase your rates to provide adequate revenues for operating expenses and capital. Understanding nobody likes to increase rates. I don't have any clients that we walk in and tell them the rates should be increased, that they stand up and applaud um, throw flowers in, in front of us. Um, but it's a rally of life that you have to pay your utility rates. Uh, you have to pay your utility costs. Now, back to the previous question, how how do we compare to the others and where's that place us? Well, in some ways, um, it's a bit out of your control because you have to charge enough to pay the costs. It's a bit out of your control because you have to charge enough to pay the cost of your utility fund, whatever they are, and. You you know, if you. Transfer money from some other fund to avoid raising rates, then you're paying for those costs through some other mechanism that may not be equitable. Because there's no relationship between like property values and. The stormwater impervious area that generates the fee that you're collecting. And so this is the most equitable way to collect them. Uh we did recommend to adopt the cash reserve policy. Of three years, three months, excuse me, of operating expenses and one year's debt service at the end of each year. We also recommend you establish your rates for a three to five year period. And we make that recommendation because if you adopt your race for a. Three to five year period, but reserve the right to revisit them in case something changes. And something could change in either direction, you want to reserve that right, but it provides certainty to your customers. Um so if if I'm a business in Wyoming and I know. And I have some reasonable belief where my utilities are going to be, I can plan and budget for them in advance. As opposed to having them raised in. December or January and I've already got my budget done, not gonna scramble to find a way to pay them. So it provides certainty to your customers, which which they like. We do recommend that you adopt the rates listed below, which were the rates without the additional transfers.
All right.
We end by saying that, you know, we base it on the information that we that we have, which is the best available from the city. And um. You should monitor merely to make sure that things go in the direction that they are anticipated to go.
All right. Thank you. Um I have a whole host of questions. Um I'm thinking that Mr. Erickson is probably going to have to jump in um with some of these questions as well, Mr. Almgeild and Mr. Linwood. So. Um. I'm gonna start with this. Uh. Mr. Linwood, do you have any idea how many residents we had in? So in two thousand and nine, um we merged township merge with the city, correct? So. City, when this was enacted, most of the city people had surface water fee or did township? How did that? Do you have a little background on that?
So the the surface water ordinance was implemented by the city in nineteen ninety seven. Um the rates that were implemented are what you see today. Um they have not been raised since nineteen ninety seven. Um in two thousand and eight, nine, give give or take in regards to the the orderly annexation between Wyoming Township and the city of Wyoming. Um formerly, Wyoming Township, they did have stormwater uh budgets, but they were able to. Um put those items within their normal budget and then um that came out in the individuals taxes in the in the former township. Where cities are operated statutorily a little differently, where we have enterprise accounts, where we have uh stormwater sewer and water utilities. And we don't have the ability to be able to put those items within an actual tax bill. So. Um at that point in time, um those former township residents started receiving that third quarter bill uh for the stormwater. So. Um in two thousand and eleven, the city council reviewed the rates um as there. At that time, there were some issues with the fund, but um after some consideration, they decided not uh to to move those rates at the time. So. Really, the the rates that you're reviewing tonight have not changed for approximately twenty three years and. Um as Mr. Erickson and Mr. Almgeild can probably go to and Mr. Dragus has started to talk about. Um there's just things now that we have to do um in regards to our MS four permits and the other items. Um that's necessary through the MPCA and federal regulations that are are really necessities and things that we need to at least do those minimum requirements. I'm just sure that we keep our permit in good standing and that we keep our infrastructure uh in the city uh up.
Okay, and um. Two thousand and eleven, so we had at that point in time, um then one of the things we've all um. Worked on the newer council members, at least in the last order to six years, has been looking at trying to make sure that the future. Uh is different than what was handed to us because um twenty three years without a rate increase and it did come. Before previous council and no action was taken. Um. Kind of leaves that to make us look like the bad people again. So um let me ask you this. During that time, um have. I'm I'm assuming there's some equipment that had to be used. There is some hard costs. Right? Whether it's chemicals, whether it's culverts, whether it's whatever. Am I safe to assume that those have actually increased in cost the last twenty three years?
I think with with anything, you know, it costs have obviously increased with, you know, with anything that, you know, that's just inflation in regards to goods and services. Um you're gonna have that. I know that. You know, we have had situations in the past. Um we did have a large culvert that the city. Um needed to repair basically in an emergency situation. Uh Mr. Erickson, I can't remember, Mr. Weck, what year that was. Um but essentially, we we know we didn't have that account funded because it was extremely costly. Mr. Erickson, can you talk about that?
I think you're referring to the large uh culvert there as part of the Bridgewater development.
That's correct.
Can't be called a year, but I would say that it. I would venture to say it was in the two thousand thirteen, fourteen range, maybe.
So.
I was kind of a guess, but I I recall that. You know, that was a one that um, you know, the funds were were sought after and weren't necessarily there, but I believe the. Uh the dollar amount just for the cost, the construction cost alone, I believe, was upwards of seventy thousand dollars for that culvert. And so. You can see where, you know, some of our infrastructure costs just for repairs uh or maintenance uh that are associated with that can. Can be quite expensive. And I think just to comment on what the mayor had. Had commented on, I think a a quick analogy is our our road network, right? And so. When we haven't done necessary maintenance on a number of items, whether it's pond maintenance or culvert maintenance. Uh we we have a slew of them that are stacking up that are requiring maintenance, similar to our roadway infrastructure. And so we have quite a few of things to get through to get things back in order, if you will. Uh we haven't had the funds in this account for uh for some time and and we haven't been. Uh funding uh public improvement project drainage uh improvements uh with this fund and we're not proposing to. Uh it's simply, you know, the ongoing maintenance of these facilities. And so. Similar to our road uh infrastructure, as I stated, we have a similar situation uh brewing with our stormwater uh assets.
Okay, and so to that point, um when he was out campaigning, you know, a a lot of people question that eight dollars, what is it for? And when we tell them it's culvert and stormwater and they're like, well, nobody has um replaced my cul- culvert and nobody has dredged my pond. Um if I'm reading this correctly, we have not had the funds to do that. And being a un- an unfunded mandate from the state. We have to get this done or the city could face some penalties. Is that correct?
Is correct.
Okay. Um and then out of the enterprise fund, um one of the things that we went to over the course of the last four years. Um and correct me if I'm wrong on this, but we have taken out the public works employees, certain amount of percentage. Of what they do will come out of these enterprise funds, correct?
That's correct, but they're they're budgeting.
Okay, and because we're an MS four city, which the threshold, again, correct me if I'm wrong, is at eight thousand residents, correct?
So there's a there's a little, there's some different different criteria. I think the one that really put us into this was. A population of at least five thousand. And our our conveyance system discharges to specially classified bodies of water, meaning. They're impaired, whether it's the Sunrise River, Comfort Lake, things of that nature. And so that's that's the threshold that they kicked us into an MS four.
Okay, and would you say, Mr. Erickson, that a lot of Wyoming is water?
Yes, yes, there is uh there's a fair amount of water and I think, you know, I think certainly people. You know, look and and take pride in in those uh environmental features in the community. I think we. You know, obviously, people like to enjoy them, whether it's Comfort Lake or Green Lake nearby or the the Sunrise River. I think, yes, and certainly wetlands uh throughout the community. Uh they they really provide that green space, but those are also. Uh things that we're obligated to protect. And so those are the reasons that we've identified the costs uh in working with public works. Uh to identify what what they need to make sure that we're maintaining and meeting those requirements of the MS four permit.
Perfect. And can we go up to what is needed from public works, please? There's a, we have a a slide or we can scroll up. Or down, maybe I can't. When we first started.
What do you mean the cap volume?
Yeah, please.
Yes, we can get there.
It's way at the top, isn't it? I apologize for that. Okay. Um so we had a question um earlier from a resident regarding um some of the items that are on here. Um and I'll let Mr. Almgeild speak to that. One of the things I think I do wanna. To bring up, which I think um everybody knows this. Um. If we don't pay for something now and we rent and then we need it when we're at a city we're growing. So when we're at a city, I don't care ten years down the road, it's gonna cost that much more money. Right? Equipment just gets more and more expensive. So um that's my only thing I'm gonna say on that. So, Mr. Almgeild, can you maybe sweet speak to um our. Uh residents' questions that we had earlier um when we got started?
Yeah, absolutely, Mayor Iverson. So currently, we have a John Deere backhoe and we got it from the township. And so we have an operator and a driver um, you know, for that, and we have a trailer. But uh the excavator we're looking at is a mini excavator and. We will need a new trailer for that. It is heavier. So we would trade in the John Deere and the trail current trailer on the new unit. Um. And then when you get to the street sweeper, uh. Currently, we do contract it out at ninety dollars an hour. Our budget is ten thousand dollars because we can't raise it anymore or nothing. That's that's the limit. And so you get one and a half sweeps in the city uh every year. So in the spring, we do the whole city. In the fall, we do half the city and that uses up to ten thousand dollars. Um. And then like any uh street sweeper or any equipment, um there are diesel engines and we would not uh have a mechanic or the facilities. To do engine repairs like anything we have now uh that we would still have to get that hired out. That was one of the questions. Um. Then we get to employees. We did figure out eleven hundred ninety three hours, additional hours a year that of maintenance we're not doing. And that's why the new employee was split up into. The three enterprise funds. And then when you get to uh the VAC trailer, uh. This VAC trailer, we could, we would be using it to clean catch basins some and our sumps once a year. Uh we uh also have a jetter to clean out culverts and the lines. The trailer also has a heater on it, so if the culverts are frozen, we can actually jet hot water through the culverts. And then last, of course, you can jet out sanitary sewer. Uh. If there's an emergency or annual maintenance. So currently, we do contract. A vector truck for cleaning our lift stations and it costs a hundred and ninety dollars an hour. And so uh. It takes three hundred and twenty hours is what we're planning on for maintenance a year. For the stuff we'd use the VAC trailer for. So that that's about forty nine thousand a year if we contracted it out. And. But if you take out eleven thousand of that for the employees hours, uh because we'd have a driver with it. So you're in the thirty to thirty five thousand dollars a year for the annual maintenance on if we rented contracted the vector. Um. And I think that was most of the questions that were on there on the. Beginning of the meeting.
Okay.
I think I think so. And Mayor Iverson, one one component, you know, that sweeper is not only um. Really trying to work through our MS four permit and um look at the phosphor levels in our in our surrounding bodies, but. That street sweeper also can be used when utilized and able to perform the necessary sweeps just to the minimum we do right now. It actually can be brought into our street maintenance program. So um many communities utilize street sweepers because actually getting uh those items off the streets, whether it's gravel, sand. Um salt, et cetera, that actually can lengthen um the the life expectancy of our streets and help with that maintenance. So I I think that's another component. Um in regards to that sweeper and having to be able to use that more diligently than we currently do.
Okay, and and as mayor, I have received um almost every spring and then uh into fall, I seem to um. Get some emails regarding that it looks like we haven't done any street sweeping. Um and now I understand that we only do it one and a half times, right? And our city is growing by the amount of streets. So. Having our own street sweeper would also be able to give us um. A chance to sweep more is basically what Mr. Linwood was saying, right? Kind of fixes in there and takes care of our roads. So um that would take care of some of the, um I think Mr. Kentrow has been one of them. That has contacted us about street sweeping in Liberty Pond. So that would kind of help in that development is to be able to um street sweep in there maybe a little bit more if if needed. So. That makes sense. All right. And then I just want to point out this, just to make sure all our residents, two things. One, the numbers that are projected are not compounded. So if we can go back up to the four dollars and the where they change each year. I just want residents to understand that it's not. Um, see if we can get it up here.
Yep. This one, beer?
Um yeah, so it's not compounded. So what I mean by that is it doesn't go two dollars and then four onto that would be six. And then six to the seven twenty onto that would be what thirteen something and so on. So it's, these are not compounded numbers. Um, these are, what's the word for it? I'm I can't, I'm missing on what word it is, but it's not compounded on each um year that we have that increase, correct?
Actual quarterly charges in each year.
Okay, perfect. And the other thing I want to point out is we've updated our website. Um when you go up to our website, um there is just a great um. Uh you can click on the tab and it really kind of explains what MS four is, what surface water fees are. So um if anybody's watching and they wanna. Definitely take a look at that beyond the questions that we're asking. I think that would be a a good explanation. So the city did a great job on that. So. I'll be quiet now and I'll go to council members if you guys are all still awake. Because I was talking a long time. I apologize. Let's go to member Schilling, please.
Okay, um. One of the things I had stated in the work session as well is the way I look at this is it's more along the lines of a course correction on a budget line. Um. We've been way under. It's gonna forecast to go extremely far under and these are funds that we need to use and. We had talked about option B, which is the transferring in the funds from the other. Uh the other. Wow. Anyway, the other budget areas, I'll go with that. Um but I I I'm have the, I'm as the thought of. Just do it, uh do it right from the very beginning. It's less work on the staff end of things. Um it's gonna put us in that same direction budget wise that needs to be with a little less work on the staff side of things, but. And again, you know, I I I looked through my own bill when we were doing this and discussing it and. You know, looking at my bill, is that gonna make a huge difference for a lot of people? And it may, it may, but it's something that we need to fix and it's something that's been untouched for, I think we had said twenty three years, if I wasn't correct on that. Um so I I'm actually in favor of the recommended option of the the standard up grease increase in that uh through the next five years. Um. So I'm gonna leave it at that. I I'm I'm going for the five year increase in that increment, so.
Thank you. Uh member Jaeger.
Do you have a list of specific projects that are planned? We talk about culverts need cleaned, ditches need cleaned. Is there any that, I mean. Is there any uh planned? Is there a list?
We we did not see a list of specific items. Uh there are the ponds, storm sewer, culvert improvements, which, you know, ponds are are the dredging of the ponds. And so there's a amount each year to accomplish those, but I don't think that, to my knowledge, you haven't identified specific. Items that would be replaced.
Mr. Erickson, maybe you can kind of talk about our swamp inventory and what we've been doing preparing for that.
Right. And so I think Nick uh answered that uh well. We we certainly have um public works has been working through. And doing their inspections of the facilities that are on site. And so we're, that's one of the components with that MS four permit is to. Uh do our our inspections and we do them about. Well, I think we're gonna be a little bit more aggressive than the minimum, but we're looking at twenty percent. Minimum each year so that we have one hundred percent of our infrastructure covered during the five year permit cycle. Um so our surface water asset management program is a is a program that we we have in place. Uh public works is going out on on site with their tablet and doing the inspections and filling in. Uh a field of questions identifying uh the condition of these in the infrastructure. And so. We know we have a significant amount of culvert work, outlet control structures, pond dredging, ditch. pond dredging, ditch clearing, tree removal. And it's certainly beyond what we know we can, we can accommodate with our budget now today. We've not prioritized those improvements to date. Uh, we're gonna be working through that this winter with Public Works to identify which projects rise uh to the to the most important level. And so as they're working through their their inventories and their inspections as we speak, um, we're gonna be prioritizing these improvements and working to identify which ones uh we should be tackling here in twenty twenty-one.
Okay, so we don't have a list yet. Uh, as on the equipment, let's see. What kind of storage facilities are gonna be required to store all this stuff?
Oh, Councilmember, remember Jaeger? Um, well, currently we bought it or rent the VAC trailer from Shisago County, and so we have that in the heated garage at certain times of the year when we're using it. Uh, street sweeper would have to be in a heated building. And the excavator uh would just replace the one that we have. And so uh, the street sweeper would be the biggest one, that'd be in a heated building and uh it'd be uh just like we do now. It's seasonal, you know, we'll winterize it and put it in cold storage uh in the winter months. Everything we do is seasonal with the buildings we have.
Do we have the facilities to store the equipment?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, um, are new facilities going to be needed to to store this equipment?
We're not talking about new facilities at this time. We're just talking about um what's in front of us. We, that's just conjecture.
I wanted to know if if we needed new facilities and if those facilities will be paid out of the stormwater funds.
We don't know that yet because we're, we haven't even touched that yet. So any other questions regarding uh what's proposed in front of you?
Oh, yes, a few more. Um, I do have some uh quest. I I I'm not comfortable with buying this equipment. People have, people in Public Works have told me that renting is usually what goes on and it usually is most cost effective. So if we, and it's a lot, it's a lot of equipment to buy. So if we didn't buy the equipment, what would happen to the financial projections?
Well, you wouldn't um, you wouldn't need as as much uh because there'd be less demand for cash. One of the criteria is having adequate cash balance. And so in in twenty twenty-one, we're transferring, you you're transferring in two hundred and fifty thousand from the Capital Reserve and you're um getting a two hundred thousand dollar grant. So the actual amount of cash that would be coming out, I think the projections show five hundred fifteen thousand of acquisition of assets and you have four hundred and fifty thousand of other funds coming in. So you're spending sixty-five thousand dollars from the stormwater fund for those assets in twenty twenty-one.
Okay, I was just wondering if we didn't buy the equipment, how that would affect our our um rates?
It 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 would make much of a change because primarily was driving the rates are the are the increased operating costs to perform the level of service you need in the storm area under your MS four permit.
Okay, uh, has the city ever been fined for non-compliance on the MS four permit?
You have not.
Okay, um, you know, we've been in MS four city since two thousand and sixteen. Why are the requirements now so much more than it was back then?
I don't know that there there are more. We fall under the same uh criteria. It's, we have a grace, we had a grace period of ramping up our activities uh being that we were a new MS four community. So once we were identified, we had a period of time to come into compliance. Similarly, with the new permit coming out here uh this month, um, we'll have a period of time. Uh, I think it's, it depends on the activity, but a period of time to adopt and and get up to speed with those new rules. And so uh, we have, I think we've made a lot of efforts with regards to inspections, with regards to uh the swamp database that we've been developing with those inspections and identifying a plan. We've certainly ramped up our educational uh component. Uh, the mayor had commented uh with regards to the website, educational components that we send out um in newsletters, things of that nature. And so there has been ongoing efforts. Uh, we've just been continually identifying the need, not only to do the inspections, but to have the follow-up and make the improvements that are necessary. So we've identified all kinds of deficiencies. And so I think we're at a point now where we need to make i- i- and and take action on what our inspections are finding.
Okay.
You know, if I may, I'd like to answer the question about the capital outlay. We have nine hundred, there's nine hundred and thirty-five thousand of capital outlay for this planning period um in the city CIP. And without any rate increases in buying the capital, you're a million three short. So if you eliminate all of the capital outlay, the fund would still be four hundred thousand dollars short of cash to pay its expenses over the planning period. If you eliminate all capital, you'd still have to transfer in four hundred thousand from some other source to pay the operating expenses.
Well, we can adjust our expenses. Um, and then my my concern is, you know, we, our economic conditions are not the greatest at the moment. And they're bad enough that people are having trouble paying the utility bill. I mean, they're so bad that we we've just waived more utility late fees. So I have to ask, is this a good time to be increasing any kind of fee?
I would only point out in twenty twenty-one, the increase is sixty-seven cents a month.
Or you doubled your fee, yes.
Yeah, sixty-seven cents a month increase.
And I think, Mr. Dragasich, I think you talked about that affordability component in regards to this. I I don't know to to go back to that in regards to rate your eight dollar increase over the year. So if for that first year.
Okay, that's all I had.
All right, um, Members Zeroes?
Yes, um, talking about is this a good time to raise this, these rates? I think that's the thing's been pushed around for the last twenty-three years. We didn't raise them and now we're in a dilemma that we're in. As far as the uh equipment goes, I'd be a hundred percent in in favor of bu- buying those three items because first of all, they're needed, they're a necessity, they're not a want. And uh, the the rates, it it, I don't know how it's gonna hurt anybody's budget by dripping, go from two dollars a quarter to four dollars a quarter in two thousand twenty-one and a minimum, and then up to seven twenty and twenty-two and so on and so forth. I don't think that's gonna hurt anybody's budget. Um, so just to let you know, I'm in favor of these increases and the equipment being purchased.
All right, thank you. Member Luger?
Well, I mean, it's a disappointing decision to have to make. I mean, because it never feels good to to ask for more money um from residents, especially during a particularly difficult era. Um, but the data and the numbers seem to show that wh- what happens when we don't, um, particularly when we haven't had an increase for twenty-three years, uh, while costs have gradually gone up. Um, and so I guess my opinion is that, you know, we have the infrastructure to invest in, we have water to deal with, and we have unfunded mandates to meet. And it sounds like either our credit rating will be damaged due to the impact of an interest rate increase that eventually gets passed off um to residents. Or we potentially have to levy for it, which isn't a great option either. So um, and it sounds like this is a trend that's going to be reflected in our surrounding communities in all likelihood. Um, and so I, you know, I I'm in favor uh in favor of it as well. Um, not because it feels good, but because it's something that we have to do um for our city in order to provide infrastructure and services. And I appreciate that we can at least ease into the change.
Thank you. Yeah, that's part of our job, right? We're elected to make these tough decisions and making sure that our um, that we have the money for our enterprise funds and and to do everything that our residents are expected us to do. I am gonna say this before I do a vote. I believe I got everybody. Uh, Mr. Aljed and Mr. Linwood, um, I have a little bit of concern if we have um if council is going to individual employees and asking them about um uh certain budget items. So um, just a little, I'm I'm hoping that's not hap- that doesn't happen. Um, we should be going to our department heads and uh discussing information, not directly to employees. Um, and that was based on Member um Jaeger's comment about talking to Public Works people. So with that, I am on to consider Resolution twenty dash eleven dash one oh nine, a resolution establishing stormwater rates for twenty-one and through twenty twenty-five based on the rate study completed by Baker Tilly Aig. Uh, I will make the first motion to approve this. Is there a second?
Second, Members Zeroes.
We have a second by Members Zeroes. I will go around for roll call. Member Luger?
Aye.
Member Schilling?
Aye.
Number Jaeger?
Madam Mayor?
Member Jaeger, what is your vote, please? We are on roll call. What is your vote?
It is nay.
All right, Members Zeroes.
I found it at the zeroes. What is your vote? My vote is nay.
All right, and now you're done, you're done. I don't have a gavel, otherwise I'd gather you. Members Zeroes, what is your vote?
Aye.
All right, and Mayor Iverson with the heavy heart is also an I with that because we never do like to increase our rates. So the uh rate increases increases do pass. Number twenty-two on our agenda, to consider the hiring of Allison Edwards as the full-time police officer with the city of Wyoming effective January first, twenty twenty. And I believe this will be Chief Poppy. I'm looking for you.
Come over here.
All right, there I see ya.
All right, Madam Mayor and City Council, uh, this is an item we've been working on for several months and that is replacing the vacancy that we have in the Police Department for one of our police officers. Uh, we have been going through the hiring process to establish an eligibility eligibility list. Uh, we've completed the first six steps in that process from application review, written exams, physical agility, oral interviews, uh, scenario evaluations, and finally the chief's interview. And the final three steps um is to uh get a satisfactory, comprehensive background check on the employee, which we're um ninety percent of the way through currently. And then uh to do a pre-employment um psychological, which is a requirement by statute that is done after we make a conditional offer to an employee. And also the pre-employment physical exam by license physician. At this point, we've selected our top candidate, which is Allison Edwards. Uh, she comes to us as a local residence, born and raised here in Wyoming, uh, attended the Winona State University where she's got her her bachelor's degree in criminal justice with a minor in Spanish. So she is uh bilingual proficient in both English and Spanish, which we think is a great asset. Um, her previous experience has been working with uh the what the uh Winona Police Department as a police reserve, but also working in uh campus security in college as she went through uh her degree and also at the same time working with Winona County Sheriff's Department as a transport officer. So the background so far has come back that she's uh an extremely motivated individual. Um, and she's tested very well through our process. Uh, last summer, she also did an internship with the Forest Lake Police Department um and also taking uh some classes in in her studies specific to child forensic interviewing. So everything that we're seeing so far with this candidate uh really just speaks highly of her as a as a person, as a candidate. Um, and we're excited to be able to uh to bring her on board. So we're at a point in the process where we want to uh extend a conditional offer to uh Miss Allison Edwards so that we can can finish the last two components, the psychological and the physician's exam before making her a full-time employment. So this would be an offer contingent upon successfully passing those last two components.
Great, um, we will open it up for questions. We will go with Members Zeroes.
I have no questions. She seems to be highly qualified. So yeah, that sounds good.
Appreciate that.
All right, Member Jaeger?
No questions.
Member Schilling?
Uh, no questions. Uh, she looks fantastic. Uh, and I uh, as always, I have always trusted the uh chief's judgment.
All right, and Member Luger?
I have no questions either. I'd like to see this continue.
All right, and I don't have any questions either. So with that, we will uh need a motion to approve Allison Edward as a full-time police officer with the city of Wyoming effective January, January first, twenty twenty. Uh, we need a motion to approve. You made the motion? Okay, thank you. You made the first, and we need a second?
Members Zeroes, a second.
Number Zeroes is a second roll call, please. Uh, Member Jaeger?
Aye.
Member Schilling?
Aye.
Member Luger?
Aye.
Number Zeroes?
Aye.
And Mayor Iverson is an I. I'm excited. That was a five-zero uh vote and I can't wait to uh officially meet Allison. So uh, we want to welcome her to our uh police force. So uh, next, number twenty-three, to consider a closed special meeting on December second, twenty twenty at six P M for negotiations for employment agreement with the city administrator and police sergeants. Uh, Mr. Lunin, are you taking this or Mr. Linwood?
Um, I cer- I certainly can. I think uh, just for this item, Mayor, we're asking the city council uh to consider a special meeting, as you stated, on that December second at six P M uh for purpose of the negotiations, employment agreements for the city administrator and the police sergeants. And we will stand for any questions.
Are we, we need that to be, we're still kind of figuring out whether we're in uh at City Hall or some type of hybrid?
Well, we will be um, we will be in person, but we'll be um, we'll be working. Uh, Ms. Dumas and I have had some discussions on this in regards to what we will be issuing um, the city councils I've had soon, and we'll probably use a combination of both um City Hall and the Wyoming Library um to conduct that meeting um to keep the confidentiality component, but also to make sure that we're following the governor's orders and not making, not having uh groups of more than ten or those three halls holds together. So we think we have a plan and will, uh, as we finalize that, we'll share that with the council uh as we near that uh that public hearing day, or excuse me, not that that meeting date, not public hearing.
All right, that sounds great. So we've had this um date on Friday. You sent this out. So did everybody check their calendars? And does December second, um, at, that's a Wednesday, um, six P M, does that work for everybody? Just a shake of your head. I can't obviously see Linda or Joe, so. All right, um, so we need a mo- motion to approve the special meeting on December second, twenty twenty at six P M at City Hall for um closed session um for negotiations. Do I have a motion to approve for that December second date?
Some more, Member Luger.
All right, uh, Member Luger is a first. Do we have a second?
Member Schilling, second.
You got it. Member Schilling, okay. Member Schilling makes that second roll call, please. Member Luger?
Aye.
Member Schilling?
Aye.
Member Jaeger?
Aye.
Number Zeroes?
Aye.
And Mayor Iverson is an I. So we will be seeing everybody the second. We'll go to council reports. We will do uh Member Jaeger first.
I attended the special meeting on October tenth. And I would like to say that I don't appreciate Ma- Mayor.
Member.
I don't appreciate.
Okay, we'll go on to Member Schilling then. You're out of order. You're out of order. Member Schilling, can you give your report, please?
I did attend the special meeting on October as well. I also attended the Planning Commission meeting uh this past Tuesday, previous Tuesday. Uh, I'd like to thank everybody for tuning in. I appreciate it and I hope everybody has a good night.
Thank you. Member Luger?
Um, I also attended the the special meeting. Um, hope everyone has a good night as well. That's all I have.
All right, and Members Zeroes?
I have no report.
All right, and I attended the special meeting. I was not able to attend the Planning Commission meeting, unfortunately. I appreciate um Member Schilling stepping in for me on that. Um, otherwise, that is all that we have. I think um it was a good meeting. Um, with that, I need a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
All right, move to adjourn. Uh, do we have a second?
Second, Member Luger.
Second from Member Luger. All in favor, just say aye.
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 So it does pass and we do wish everybody happy Thanksgiving. Uh, Chief Poppy is wishing everybody happy Thanksgiving as well. So stay safe and we'll see you soon.